Here is.
Audible.
Ms. Vera, would you like a water?
I have, I think I have like tea and water, right? I appreciate it.
There is a three minute timer here, so it'll go up after three minutes.
Should be okay. My name is Vera and I am speaking to you today as some other three children, two of whom attend public, Woodburn Public School. And another who's planning to start in the dual language program in the next couple of years. When we first looked at buying a house in 2019, one of the benefits that drew us to Woodburn was the multiple language options available through the public school. Our previous district where we first enrolled our eldest in kindergarten only offered finally will Spanish education on a lottery basis. Our first and second districts only offered the Spanish thoughts of the once a week. So being able to enroll our second child in a two way bilingual emergent program for kindergarten was something we looked forward to in our efforts to raise more culturally competent children. I recently attended the last public bargaining session between the Woodburn Education Association and the Woodburn School District. As a parent and even a community member, I believe it's in everyone's best interest, especially our students, staff, teachers, or at the very least adequately supportive. And at best are so fully happy with their jobs that you don't struggle to fill out the decision. From what I've not heard, I must say that I support our teachers and other district employees and share many of their concerns. I wholeheartedly agree the language in the district policy needs to be changed from should to shall when discussing the commitment to a dual language and multi-language program. And the board policy in fact does not replace a need for a better article in the CBA. Our children deserve that the education they are promised to be. To be able to be upheld and that those educating them receive the support that they are promised. Respectfully, this benefits all parties involved unless accountability is not wanted. We also need three coordinators for each language avenue, English, Russian, and Spanish. Currently, there are only three instructional coaches for elementary, two for middle and high school, and only one for K through twelve Spanish. I've heard nothing but wonderful things about her. We have five elementary schools and two instructional coaches. They have both high schools and middle school, and the one coordinator slash translator for the Russian program does not seem like nearly enough. I would argue that in addition to not even place of each avenue needs an instructional assistant at each grade level for these languages. I also heard Dr. Merlock share concerns about economic impact, but what about the economic impact of losing educators? Nearly eighty percent, and I rounded up just a tiny bit, at the highest of our teachers at the high school level where I also have a student. Have over the recommended hundred fifty students per day. Seventy-five percent of valor teachers, where my daughter was last year, have a workload higher than a hundred forty students per day. I was alarmed to hear that no one has looked at the simple solution of moving students to another class to help balance the workload. I was also concerned to hear comments from teachers that have job posting off of one thing down on the. Down the road, the district will not follow through or make excuses, and while there might be very legitimate reasons, it does not sound like much responsibility is taken. Being taken by the district and instead it's being passed on to the teachers, their aides, et cetera. When we have high turnover rate, lack of teachers and substitutes, the list goes on. Obviously, this is a multifaceted issue that we're seeing across many districts, but the way things are going have been going are clearly not working. Classes are being disrupted at alarming rates and we have the knowledge and tools to bring in a desolate support. So obviously, do you recognize the need for smaller class sizes, the more intimate learning environments when they split up the high schools several years ago? And that much not have not changed as far as what is left for our students, and this information is backed by a number of studies and data. New houses pose a risk to our Title I funding, making it more imperative that the school stays on top of providing adequate teaching staff and instructional assistance. You, the school board, have an obligation to the parents, students of this district, as well as the teachers. According to the Oregon Title A, Title One A Guidebook. Recognizing that the quality of Title One programs depends on the skill of staff. No Child Left Behind emphasizes highly qualified staff and continues sustained professional development. Decisions making is centered at the school level with parent involvement as a key component. Our students need less tablets and more adults in the school supporting them. We need licensed counselors and social workers in every school, building rapport with staff and students alike. The teachers are overloaded and deserve better, and more than anything, our students deserve better. Could you please use this as your wake up call? Thank you.
All right, we only have one little comment today. Next today, we have a work session. And item number one is a first reading of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four calendar and two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five calendar.
All right, thank you. I also have with me two of the other three members of our committee, so I'd like to, they're on Zoom tonight. So Carrie Michelson is our Vice President of the WEA. And Debbie Wolfers is the President of OSVA. And then Nikki Tucker, our Director of Personnel, is also on the committee. So we. Put together, just for some background, we put together, as we always do. Calendars based on sometimes past practice and other kinds of things that we're, we're deciding to try to look and make some changes. We put out for some feedback. The feedback that is included in your packet tonight is only up through February sixth, which was yesterday. And then we'll continue to take feedback on that. We'll put out some more messages to get those going, but we had to at least take a quick snapshot on those. We also, and you'll see that there's a third one tonight in here, we made a revision already based on some of the feedback that we can kind of talk through. Calendars never make everybody happy because everybody has a different idea of what. Works for the family and what works for schools and everything else. And so we tried to do the best we could to. To get calendars that would make the most sense. There are some constraints and things, and I'm actually, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie, because we were talking. A little bit before too about what some of the constraints are and. The difficulty to make sure we count all right, then the colors, you think we'll get all changed, we'll have different calendars for different groups. I wasn't going to talk about the calendar, Debbie.
I know. Stop with the colors.
But if we do talk about a few things, the things that sometimes people don't recognize that we have to take care of just from a data and accountability standpoint in the calendar.
Um, yeah, I can do that. And sorry, I'm not going to show my face because I'm homesick and so I'm just gonna be talking and not visible. So some of the things that we have to watch with the calendar is we have contract things by contract. When in service, some in services are. We try to keep workdays on a Monday or Friday, which instead of having it disruptive in the middle of the week, which can be a challenge. We need to make sure that we try to keep our quarters and our semesters in balance. So that like one semester isn't fifty days and they are a hundred days and the other one is like ninety days or seventy days or whatever. We just have to keep everything in balance. And. So it's, it's just trying to do that, working around holidays, then things like last year. We, we had everything and it looked perfect. And then after the approval and the little way down the line, Juneteenth was approved. And so that kind of. Threw us out of balance and we had to make some adjustments. So we have a certain number of student days we have, we have a certain number of teacher contract days that we have to observe. And so all of those things, it's like putting a big giant puzzle together and making it best for, you know, what works for kids to. And trying to, you know, just be creative and then, you know, then there's the color. Lots of color, trying to get all of that right. And constant like counting and recounting and. So anyway, it, it's a challenge to do. The other thing is, is like what the, you know, the importance of the calendar and getting it done in a timely manner is that calendar drives everything. Currently, we're waiting to be able to begin scheduling because it's the, it's the most important component in scheduling, knowing what our school year is going to be, when it begins, when it ends. And when those terms are. And also another thing, kindergarten registration, which we usually start at the beginning of April. We can't start it unless we can put those years in for the next year at each school and get those kids registered. So. Those are some of the things that we deal with and part of the reason why we wanted to do a twenty-three, twenty-four and a twenty-four, twenty-five. So that, that we're ahead of the game and that we can actually start some of those processes earlier. Did I miss anything, Joe?
No, thanks, Debbie. And then I'll turn it over to Carrie, see if she has some additional boxes.
Um, we had originally had a little bit different winter break, but we changed it a little bit based on some of the feedback given, not just by staff, but also by families. So, you know, that's an important component that, you know, the team got together and actually looked at feedback from both family and staff. And then also I had done a survey just for staff about some of these things and. One of the main concerns that came up with them was the full day PD days, just. If not wanting it to be the same as what it is right now, just seven more hours of the same. So Dr. Locke had talked about, you know, he's got a vision for how to differentiate, for how to include, you know, so that there's planning time, so there's actual professional work time. And so I think if he can lead us in that, that. That's the biggest caveat for some teachers is that if we can have differentiation, then I think there'll definitely be a lot of, a lot more support for those full days.
Joe, can I add too that currently classified employees rarely are involved in any type of in-service? And that's really an important component, they, to make them feel like they're part of the staff. And some of those full days, they're going to allow them to be involved in PD that they really need, cell training, things like that. Currently, I was talking to our cafeteria manager who tries to do mandatory trainings, but you can't really do anything mandatory if it's not a work day. Those are going to enable her to, you know, to have those trainings and have a day that she can do it that is actually scheduled into their calendar. So that's something that we've wanted for a long time. And I mean, and not only just instructional assistants and, but like custodians and. Nutrition services to make them feel like, you know, they are part of the staff, not saying that they, they aren't, you know, and not made to feel that way. But they're always cooking and IAs are supervising and during those Wednesday light starts, so. I just feel like this is really going to be a great thing for classified employees.
Right, so let's, let's talk about that. And I know that's one of the, I don't know if it's an elephant in the room, but it's certainly one of the bigger changes in here. And so. Right now, we currently have a, we have Wednesday legs starts and we'll start a certain number of hours late and people come to that. We looked at then, instead of doing it every week at that later start, looking at the number of minutes that is not equals a school day essentially. So it's about the same as doing that. So we were trying to do a couple of things. One, be less disruptive during the week when you have that, that late start, because we have a lot of folks who are doing those things. Two, allow us some time, and I'm glad that Carrie asked this question because. I don't think I would also not want to have seven and a half hours of straight PD and that would. That would be a long, long day and that is actually not. So the idea is, and there are some things that happen during those, those, those late starts, we do some PLC, some professional learning communities, we do some. Some professional development. I just said that we did the PLC work, we do some, some staff meeting time. And so looking at those whole days, instead of doing, breaking them up and having them every other or every week. It does a couple of things. One, it allows you to have a planned day where you'll have some professional development and you'll have some PLC time, you'll have some work time with your things, you'll have some job alike. Right? So when you get an opportunity where all third grade teachers get to meet and we're working on something or, you know, this year we rolled out some new literacy curriculum. It's hard to get in there and do a blast of that for forty-five minutes and then boom, you're into the next thing and then moving into the next thing. This allows us to kind of spend more quality time on it and also not be rushed additionally, and this is what Debbie was talking about. Our classroom assistants, our classroom aides, our educational assistants. They don't get training on these most of the time because in those mornings, those late starts, they're usually managing kids who are being dropped off by families who have to work and do those kinds of things. We looked at a single day as well. One of the pieces of feedback that came in was. Could you make it consistent every month? Like it's the first Monday or the third Monday or the one, actually Carrie had done. Account on which numbers they were, but essentially the difficulty is we also have holidays, so we tried to avoid doing too many three days. We tried to spread them out, but we have conference dates that are in there. You know, we have a non-contract day, which is the statewide in-service. There are some contractual things like that, because we come back from winter break that we have. We have the actual holiday, which is that we have a workday that comes after the holidays, right? So. If you look at the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, Monday is the holiday, Tuesday is a workday, right? So some of those things that we have in the calendar are by contract until we have to manage those, but. I think that's the, the, one of the biggest changes. As both of them alluded to, we did make changes based on the winter break piece and that, that seemed to be one of the big things that people were, didn't want to start halfway through that week. Before the winter break. And so we took those days and put them out and railed it and June. You know, a day later there and an additional day, February or sorry, September first, which is a Friday. So. I think before I go any further, am I missing anything, Debbie or Carrie?
I think that was the main part of the feedback. Yeah. I mean, we did look at trying to make it consistent, but like you said, there are just so many other factors.
And we, the reason why we, because I know Monday, the Monday thing came up a lot in the comments. And I know that one of the reasons we talked about Monday versus Friday, and I think Carrie, you brought this up in that, was that if you did it on Monday, then you could actually put it into action. The rest of the week as opposed to doing it on Friday and then, you know, going home and like by Monday, you've had the weekend and everything, but just being able to use what you learned the next day. So.
Right. So I think I'll take a pause there. Like I said, the copies I gave you and I can send you, I can actually put you in access with the spreadsheet as it is, that's up to February sixth. And those are the, all the comments that we have in there and we tried to do a little bit of tallying and you can kind of see at the very top of that spreadsheet that I. And I think you'll see some totals in there. I think I'll pause and see if there are any questions before we go further. We wanted to give you enough time to look at this. We wanted to have enough time for the community and the staff to weigh in. But that's why we're coming this one with. With the initial read and if there are other things you want to see or think about or questions about.
Now, one, one thing I was, right, of course, here is.
We did do that. So it doesn't work very well in twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. But we did move our professional day to the seventh. On the Tuesday of Jan- in January, that is that day, yeah. And that's, that's the, the big day. And so that's, that one did work out. The other one is very difficult and although it actually showed up on a Sunday, so that might be why it's Sunday. So we. We made a professional day coming right after that, if you look on the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. The revised is, yeah, it's different in that way.
Well, the two professional days in November, very like a special plan to go through the. For fun there.
Yeah, so the, the two days in November, the general concept is that it comes. On conference that we actually do ourselves. One of the big things that we hear all the time from our educators is that. They would like to have some voice and choice in the kinds of things they would like to learn about. You know, we often throughout the year, the, the PD is planned based on things we, we've heard, we have a new concept, can we really do those in the spring? And we hear about some of those, then we have some new curriculum, some other things, but. There are a lot of times where our educators have a very specific need and, and the longer they teach, the better they are, even knowing exactly what they need. I need a class on this. And so in the past and then. I've seen this operate in a couple of districts where you run a local conference for two days. You actually have some of your local educators, many of them are actually doing a session or two. You try to limit the number of sessions they give because you also want them to go. It's something like, oh, you all just do eight seconds. Like, no, 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 we need to go. So it becomes a day where all of our staff gets to come together. There might be some vendor. PD, you know, if we have a new adoption, then we can come in and say, hey, third grade, we're going to have the person who is in charge of this and do the other thing. So. It becomes a day or a few days of professional development where you don't have students coming correctly after, and you also don't have to. You, you know, stress about it beforehand. One of the things about PD at the beginning of the year, and this is true everywhere. Our staff are worried about kids who are going to be coming to their classrooms very soon. And so there's not a lot of. Super great focus sometimes because people are like, okay, I, I'm listening to this, but I actually got worried because I got these kids coming next week and I got these things ready to go. And so. By moving it back a little bit in the, in the school year, it makes it so they have some better focus. They know who their kids are, they have a better idea of what they need, and they can go, okay, now I have X, Y, and Z needs, but these are the kids I have. Sitting in front of me every day. And so by moving it back a little ways. This is the first year, the only year that you've ever had Thanksgiving off. And so it's a change from a change, but it's not he's been in it for a long time. And then the other thing, the one other one is about parting the world every day. And that's something that, that Woodburn's done for the last seven years, I think. It's seven years, so it's been a while.
Have we done something like that in the past day in a row? The conference slash summit?
They have done, see, Carol, we talked about that. We don't, it was a summertime or it was right at the beginning of the year.
What was the question?
Well, have we done a teacher-driven conference here in Woodburn before?
It's been a while.
Okay. Requesting voice and choice in the PD. And we have, again, going back to the, we have to remember, we also have a number of contract days that we fit into the calendars. And so, you know, putting them in there. That's the concept because we don't. I mean, everybody likes to have a week off, but you also couldn't put yourself earlier than June. We can't start in the early December. I guess we could start in August, but you don't do that. The, well, if you look at the results, the results are yes and no. So we look at the, the numbers in about having the, the change over Thanksgiving and winter break, those. Looking through those comments, it's. Yeah, if you go, if you go, yeah, each, each row is a response. So if you're looking at the. In each section, so we've got one at the top, it says family, little tiny font from the upper left-hand corner. And we just mix both things, which is fantasy, we put them, we put them all into one. Each row is one person's response.
I have a question. So I did review the survey. At least when I looked at it, it didn't show what, maybe what the calendar is now, and what the changes would be. Or for people just kind of figure it out. Was that listed? Like, for example, maybe we no longer have.
Right, yeah, that was in the description. And then in my superintendent's message that I sent out on that Friday and announcing again, I had further descriptions of each one of our things and highlighting the specific big changes. So reminding that we start for Labor Day, but we've done the change from Wednesday legs start to on Monday for the. The other one that says staff, I'm sorry for the time and a little font, so, but the staff one is also. Individual, and then we do have by staff types, you'll see classified, certified. We have another in there and we have administrator performing there as well. So you'll see that, you can see by type and I goes again. Right.
Is that the center of the total or the? I think there, there's like. Two hundred, so, you know, like. Of the total.
Yeah, the total. Yes, so far.
Participation rate. What was that?
Well, we're a hundred and fifty-eight, so we have about seven hundred employees. Yeah, and we'll do one more round of this. That's again, as of yesterday. Families we have in our district? Well, if we have five thousand two hundred and fifty kids, we probably have seven thousand families. More than, than that one, so. Even if we have, if we just count the five thousand. The to- totals of the families are very, on the very last page. Yeah. About a hundred, a hundred and one English and nineteen Spanish. And we'll make another push. We have additional data or we have to.
Yeah, certain ages or. It seems like this is like a re-concern every year, but sometimes I really. Like another survivor.
Yeah.
When we know that, so they're not all at work. And so then we want to make a new conversation, things kind of.
We that. There are lots of different kinds of things we do for service. And I agree, I, I think there's also a survey fatigue, like, you know, our survey coming, that's great. What we find that the, the one on the calendar who are upgraded, very concerned over the, any changes. Sometimes we get other, I mean, since the comments on it had nothing to do with the calendar, not even there was, you were going to form the telephones. The difficulty in this, and both Debbie and Carrie spoke to it earlier. That there are some constraints that not everybody in this park is playing for, that there's a number of days per year. Based on. Keeping the balance between this and that. And so sometimes it looks weird on here. But it's because we've had to try to figure out. And so when I were doing the comments, I recognized some people, like some of the big ones, the, like the winter break, if you want to have the four key weeks. Okay, so we can shave a couple of days. And that was, that was a generalized comment that came across many, from many people, both staff and family. So I think we have to kind of look at them with a general dollar. Are you not going to get five thousand people to, to tell you that I've gone many nights? I'm not sure how to differentiate that from the other.
Right, and I think five thousand. More, and that would make sense. And so it's best. We hope it's a relationship that's for the trust of the school or the partnership that you just have to be around or. I, I was excited by the time somebody asked you, and I've got six, seven months there. For whatever reason, I'm often making the deal, the calendar, didn't know about it. Then they shared. And so. If I, I wonder why in a new survey or why when you know about it. So I'm just wondering if there's other ways for other people for. It's not always the same, even if they were trying hard. If I'm hard, sometimes I'll be returned. Like the best solution, maybe we're not doing something. Like the best solution, maybe not doing something.
We are going to cut it off before the next board meeting, so we probably that uh third day before. I have calendars here, but they don't have the calendar for now. Right, yeah, we compile that and and put it into the board, and then Debbie and Carrie and I will meet again. I can go over those and see what else has come in. And then if we see any other kinds of things, we have other ideas. Uh but we will review and tally all those, and then a little bit less, we'll give you the raw data, but also just try to do some tallying and. Show you that. In the meantime, if you have things that come up for questions, if you hadn't thought about the calendar, please just get them directly. I'll pass it on to both Carrie and Debbie and Nikki. Um because we wanna try to gather as much of this as possible. Debbie mentioned it before. Um we're hopeful to get ready to go for March first, because we are waiting um every year uh to start our forecasting to get. Our staffing and we get students in the classes. That's part of the reason why we're bringing in twenty-three, twenty-four and a twenty-four, twenty-five, so then next year we can do work younger, twenty-five, twenty-six, or a year ahead. And this helps for our summer school planning, for all the rest of things that we're doing. Actually, but taking account when we take it out, both um. Families and staff to do a plan for, you know, your weddings or the vacation, the things they wanna do, it's having. That ahead of time by three years. Uh there's been a lot of feedback about what that looks like, so we have a couple of things that happen. One, um those are usually our hardest day um in behavior. There are days where it's difficult for, and we have to see that, we have more and more kids who are coming to be dropped out because people aren't ready to jobs that you're going with days. Um one of the questions that came up was, are you gonna have something available for families on Mondays? And that's the new kind of our ASC that. You know, for school club that. I think also, you know, I I got a couple of. Things that came in uh from some of our teachers talking about. Uh moving to a full uh to a four-day work week. Um which, yeah, that's an interesting kind of concept, four-day school, four, four-day school. Um as a way to reduce stress, you know, they can only do it five days, five days, five days. Um and so this seemed to be a compromise to go and take the same amount of time. Uh and then provide some additional breaks that are not doing the clashing thing, getting some back morning, and so it's one way to look at this. Without losing a bunch of instructional time and then also providing some of those spaces in between. It's the same baby now.
If you might have a kid or having to babysit with your sibling all day, that was a good deal. Um I know families. Use their Wednesday mornings to do appointments. And so I'm just kind of thinking of like. Because adding that extra Monday. After maybe a hard weekend at home. And again, I don't know what that looks like for our families and students, but as someone who serves our community. Um and also how I see it, and really it's concerning for a lot of our students. So I I hear that it would make sense for qualified to be part of the team, I think that many teachers like it. I mean, would teachers be able to continue to teach and do their job on a Wednesday, they start as. Having the full runway off.
Sure. Yeah, it's just that I I think that um we do have lots of muscle to. Drop at that time because they don't have all the childcare. And, you know, we look at the destruction of the school day, that's the biggest destruction that comes in there. Because of the late start. We talk about early release, it's pretty much the same thing. Um seeing the difficulty with early releases, if people get home very early, and so sometimes like trends of that region. You, if you'd like, I can bring back calendars with those as well, and we can look at uh late start and you know what.
To compare.
To compare. To compare the full day versus the late start. And then we'll, we'll have to readjust. The entire calendar, both of these, what we can do. So if we bring back a calendar um with the Wednesday late start. Yeah, yeah, we would have to, we would just redo these, which is fine, but we could redo those and then you could look at the differential.
I guess on the same topic, what, how far had you leaned towards this versus keeping the late start?
Um it is nearly half and half. Uh yeah, it's a little bit more positive for the one day we. Than it is for the uh late start. But not by landslide amount. Yeah, and then there are several who are in the neutral zone, so I think the family is long good, five and fifteen, sixteen who are neutral. Three, twenty-three who are no. Forty who are yes. Forty yes. Twenty-three no. Yeah, I'm not that on the family side, and more positive about them. Some of that, of course, was also about um. Looking at our winter break, by and large, that was a change, and then for our staff with five. Twenty-seven for yes. Um fifteen, nineteen for no, and. Fourteen for neutral. I wouldn't say it's an overwhelming ability, there's certainly. For families, it's more of a preference than it is. Maybe. Not spreading it on them. Really.
Yeah, on that same note, I started noticing the next year, it's only one week out of December, but then I looked at January and.
Nice.
They get that week back, so.
Yeah.
Um it was good to see that, because I know a lot of families travel during the holidays. This one, again, like, I'm doing the same, doing them heads up, so they may. Lots of according to.
Right. Okay, we'll continue to take feedback. Um I'll maybe we'll meet again, after we've gotten some more. We'll put out some please and. We're gonna think about other ways to get additional family feedback as well as our staff, so. I know that both Debbie and Carrie have been talking to lots of folks and trying to get that feedback in. It's been very helpful to have. Um both of our association leadership as part of the the committee and also Nikki. Who does personnel things, let's think right to town, uh for us, try to get this outdoor and. And take them. I know somebody who'll get all the colors right.
Yes, yes, I will, and I'm so bored, I'll be excited to do that.
Thanks, Devin.
You're welcome.
I thank you both, uh Carrie and Debbie, for being here, right? Right, so last time I gave you a huge stack of the policies of the year, just the quarterly update from uh the time of summer. On those, these are not the winter ones. Uh yeah, those have not been gotten to, so. I wanted to, I I knew we were having a little calendar, I knew it was a little workshop session, if there were some questions, if we had about some of the policies in there. I'll do my best to answer them or we take notes to prepare for the following one. It is an overwhelming amount of policy, the policy change happens um by and large because of changes in the law. Um and so we're grateful that we have the OSBA service that does actually um. Make the changes within our own policies, the Woodburn policies, when you do those changes in this.
The current information on nutrition health and the information on their health and sexuality education. How would that, how would I?
So which policy are we looking at? So in things like this, we we do already have some curriculum, um and those things do get updated, so especially if they're online. If we have to provide additional things, we would have to. Yeah, or find some material to do that, yeah. But some of those are um updated online already, and so they'll follow lots of. That's a lot coming. If it doesn't exist, then we'd have to get some fucking memory things to add to it. I don't know when the last time is that uh Woodburn adopted their health program. About the changes or about expanded options in general?
Right, in general.
Okay, so uh expanded options, long time ago when it came in. Uh wasn't way to require districts to offer uh things for students or options for students to get out of their district to go to their own place. To learn some things that they didn't offer them, so in some locations, uh they didn't have access to, let's say, AP curriculum. Or they didn't have access to. Like decent mechanics, so they didn't have access to other kinds of programs that. That they wanted to take, and so expanded options, the the law around that actually was a way to. Uh require districts to allow students to get out of there and um bring them to physical, to cover the cost. Um so we had several programs available already at Liver High School. And so we don't have a lot of folks who take this specific thing called expanded options. We sort of put the words together in the same way, because we call them expanded options, but it's not the expanded option law. Right, so there's a kind of difference. Uh this little change is just about uh modifying the term, but. But by and large, the the idea behind that is to provide as many different options for students. And if we don't have them, we're like, we're gonna find them outside. Education from a long time ago. Again, Liver High School has several options like that. We do the. Uh we're on a career academy, that kind of thinking, and then they also have um AP and. Recently, IB. Those would all be considered expanded options. Correct. Yeah, they've just changed um. But one of the changes is the the definition of oral language, so some places. Um already included the ability to use, you know, sign language or heritage language. Or other languages that weren't a student primary language, so the big change, I I know it's a signing. Including that as a role language uh for graduation in the firm. And then if you look. Let's see, that is ours. So our policy, um which is all the way on. A one hundred and seventy-nine in the packet. Policy IQ app. So they've had to make a few revisions to educational programs in the state. Because there are different kinds of. Way that kids can learn in class, so WCA is one of those things that we as a partner, they're not an official school themselves, because they're a program run by the PSE. So things like that program. Uh we have a little put in that that we accept their credits. It could be um. It's a whole myriad of different uh different kinds of programs that exist out there, and so. In some cases, these law changes are made because the role you're accepting or not accepting based upon our local policies. Let's see, they're a grade, information on page one eighty. Um when we had additional requirements, you know, so some districts will have a cap spend project with the requirement for students to graduate. The rest of it is largely unchanged uh from where we are now, so the the same information about uh regular diploma. There are specifics about modified extended diplomas. Yeah, we do some transcripting of. Uh those, uh as we bring them in, we try to find out what their level is and what classes, because often, most often in the homeschool. We know they'll have a course, I don't know which course they take them to. Transfers and training and danger and addition. It depends on sometimes um. If they wanna come, obviously they come back full-time, uh generally, if they're uh homeschool students who want to take a course, will be in in electives. Uh, and if there is room within, uh, core class, uh, the final, or that, you know, not that we can provide their lessons at home. That's a good way, but yeah, we do, we do some transcripting, we call it hand transcripting, even though it's in computers, but. You know, sometimes we have to figure out what this course is.
So in the higher ed space. Uh, I'm speaking, they do, they do, we tend, students, we come back. To the caution. Um, so, let us secondly, if they look at a portfolio or. Get your board or something on the lines, do we have an assessment tool? Um, typically, also, universities, new colleges don't like accepting, right?
So we don't have a, a way to assess, though, that it is possible to do proficiency-based. Uh, kinds of ways of to look at things, if they come in and say, by the way, I happen to speak, um. You know, Mandarin, and is there a test you need to get those things, we have some ways to do that, so we, uh, do use the stamp test. Uh, to test our proficiency of our students, that helps us level them when they come in, or if they come in a eighth grade, let's say that they're at the right level, that they'll join our language program, or somewhere else. Um. Because we have some ways to do that, but not for getting credit necessarily. So I know that the college entrance exam is not typically nice, so. You know, puts you into, you know, whatever level, and now you either earn that credit or you. Or you just started a higher level, yeah, um, we do have student support to earn credits locally, so through the community college, and then we put through the. Challenge of getting them accepted at universities and what they do, but. Yeah.
It's a couple here that did recommend the. Move on for wellness program. And then I saw the town putting against it. That because we have. Other secret sheet or.
Right. If you look down, uh, a little bit further down, gifted program, and it certainly says that the required one IG BBC.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one is, uh, probably replacing the other IG BBC. So recommend delete, instead of doing the other revisions, they, they, sometimes there are so many versions that these just delete, making them. Yeah, so you'll see the IGBB, which is just above it a few lines, and it's, uh, that's the required one, which replaced what we have for IGBBC.
And then instead of new one for us, we wouldn't have that digital word.
Right, we, if you go back to. But you see IGBB is actually policy you have. That's on page one five to seven. Which. You can see the additions that they're, they're putting in there. And this is putting the information that's in that one. And then just this more generalized policy there, saying, do this one, yeah, and then, because they've actually got three policies, we got IGBB. Although, they got IG, they're like, it's IGBBA. Uh, and then there are AR for both of those, the other thing that's fully decided, which is. Uh, we've done several things that are put into the required policies. It's sixty-eight. And that policy is all of that, and pick one, eight, nine, also, so. So, some of the small things, they've just changed students to children. Um, they put that paragraph that was the third paragraph down, up in the top two. So if you have legal control of the child between the ages of six and eighteen, is not in the twelve grade, you're required to have your child in attendance. Um. It does talk about that homeschooling, if you're not doing that. And then, uh. The AR around, um, what kind of notices. I'm sure it's still in this law, it used to be that, they were the attendance court. Attendance court, you know, if you take books to. Provide citations, that is still applicable, for us to do citations through the court process. With some of that expression been changed a little bit. Facts. Well, page one ninety-four. Uh, they replaced the block of thing on the ninety-five, that is just around. What the citation has to have. I'm looking at Casey, but I don't believe we've done citations for a long time. Yeah.
I've been here since ninety-seven, I don't know if we ever have.
Okay. It's not very common, but. It still exists over the. Okay, there's a lot of policy here, if there are more, uh, or questions that come up hearing, um, by and large, except these policies, uh, the large. Majority of which are driven by some of the changes in law, um, we have not made, in my office, any other changes to them. Yeah, what is you doing in the recommendation, but they are, because as we started debates, you're like, okay, twice, and. So, better reminder, once, they'll have big words like delete across there. That's easy to see, and then, oh, if they're new, maybe you mash the policy update, and that's all they're. Decent rates, and it's each one, where they're required. Or. So it would not, it would not be many other changes, we're just not considering conditions.
Second, and then, um.
It should be in this month already, it'll be in March, I think, but if it's still working. So that will be. We'll bring another set. So what we're means for the, uh. For the twenty-eighth, of what? Yeah.
So why don't I look under the roadmap and just have, you know, still giving that someone? But for this, is this page?
I'm sorry, did you say that, which one again?
I thought page sixty-nine.
I don't have my.
Right, so that, that is like.
It, it includes, yes, it was about that elementary.
So even in a way. The like, you want that strictly, yeah.
They are. Uh, not a kinder necessarily, you know, but they are, uh, in elementary.
Right, so I guess I'm thinking of. Um. That that would be. And so I know there's a timeline, there's, because you'll have a timeline for it.
Uh, we do not have a timeline.
Um. So how do we know what's next, sure, I guess.
There is plan, I just don't know what the plan is, we've actually spoken with our, uh, with our principal, we do have these in some places already, so the next, let's figure out what we.
Right, I guess, what I, I mean, this is one thing that I hear a lot from parents, and I. Find out about it, because they show it to me, and so. Well, that's the, um, the logic communication. Okay, did you know that in the bathroom, like, I don't? And then I'll be just going, oh, which I don't know, and with my, that's a date, so I'm just wondering, is there any, um. Communication around this, to give fans, um, I have that.
So we haven't added anything during this year. But I'm aware of, that are new things.
I don't know that, right, that I keep hearing that. That I don't know, maybe it was last year that, that is when it happened, and they noticed it, I don't know, and so I'm just wondering, kind of going back to. That's a relationship, um, when you're in, after longer.
Well, that bill was actually done in, in twenty-twenty-one, so that.
Right, but it's a, it's happening in sports. Um, and maybe only one, same as a problem, at least in a mother, I think, last year, or Asian, maybe. And so, you know, parents have to question, I mean, that. Okay, because I don't know, um, where they have concerns, and so I wonder if there's a way to share. Like, you know, this is a bill, this is happening, this is what.
Sure.
Um, as opposed to like, hey. I can see all rendition left. I'm just wondering if there's any conversation. In that, sure.
We can make some new information, but. It's not, I mean, it's something that had, had already happened in the past, and I'm not sure where our status is on each doctrine, but I think that follow that, and then you can certainly let people know. That it's a lot of this. Okay.
Okay, so next, we have, um, work calendar. And we're pretty ready to board you in, I think, very, very good. And then another regular board meeting on. March fourteen.
And so in the February for the eighth, will be, um, yes, I can add that on the calendar.
Right. Well, it's that enough, they will bring in the other ones we've got. We'll get some more, whatever data we have, and just check that with you again.
We'll be meeting in March.
Yes.
Right. Unless you wanted to add one. Yeah, the fourteen. The week after a classified appreciation, that's all.
Okay, that's the day. I don't know, that's the day.
Uh, two weeks, yeah, spring break is.
Oh, sorry, not in conferences.
Conferences, yes, conferences are the week after that. Twenty-three, or twenty-two.
I mean, future, so we're going to. What about?
Um, I mean, the hard one of the, um. Like in January, that we've been getting sort of timeline for, um. Is it like, to bring that in down, I don't know. At January three, so. Do you recall that?
Yeah. We.
So we need a. We need an updated timeline.
For this year.
For evaluation.
The names. And then, so. Well, next, we have. Executive session, ORS one ninety-two point six two zero to be to conduct deliberations with persons consignated. Better go to anybody to carry on their negotiation. What about?
As if we don't have any more attending remotely, you can. Does any?